Good evening, everyone. This is the Board of Selectment meeting on March 20?
Thirteen.
And we're opening the meeting. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast via our local cable, access channel WCAT, Zoom, Facebook, and YouTube. If anyone in the audience is recording, please let us know. We're going to start standing up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to have a discussion with a possible vote to appoint Mark J. Carron of 1263 C. Main Street Warren to the Warren Housing Authority until May 6, 2025. Anticipated vote. With you.
Good evening. Thank you for entertaining this petition. And I come before you as a resident relatively new, within the last four years, but with some experience in public service in the past from other areas, as you see, former state representative from a neighboring district. But, you know, I've come to really endear this, who plan on making this home for the foreseeable future, maybe till death, but that's something I don't like to cast too fire ahead of myself. And the area of housing has, you know, come before me anyway, is an issue of, one, there's some issues, there's some opportunities here for the town and for the region, and I'd love to play a part in it if you see it. And then after speaking with the town administrator for a little while, it seems like this particular board has seen some volatile participation, and I look to add some stability to it.
That's good.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Guys, you have any questions? Rich?
No, I don't think so.
David?
Yeah, I just thank you very much for showing interest in the Board of Assessors.
No, Housing Authority.
Housing Authority, sorry.
I want people to like me.
That's the other one. So the Warren Housing Authority, thank you very much again. You know, any help is definitely a big help, and, you know, they need some help over there right now. They're a little shorthanded, so, thank you.
I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mark, for the support, and the door is always open. You can reach town administrator or us.
Well, thank you for listening to me now. I'll thank you for the vote maybe a little later.
Yeah, give it a couple months.
Well, a couple minutes, yeah. No, thank you, in all seriousness.
Appreciate it.
So, ready?
You have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mark.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
What did the letter come from?
Introduce yourself. Oh, you got to come up to the mic. What was the letter from?
Tim Byson? Yeah, from Carron dot mark at gmail dot com.
I'm sorry?
His personal email looks like it has his name and last name at gmail dot com.
Yeah, but who was, who were they recommended, who was recommended? What?
Nobody recommended him. He offered to be on the board until the elections.
I thought, I thought it had to be recommended by somebody at housing.
No.
No.
Nope, he's just requesting an appointment.
From my understanding, there's two different boards. There's the main board, and then there's the tenant board.
LTL, yeah.
The tenant board has to be recommended to us for it to be the representative on the tenant board on the main board.
Right.
I think that's what you're thinking about. That's not what he's going after. He's going after the main board.
The main board, right.
Yeah, not the tenant board.
But didn't the tenant board send a letter of recommendation?
No.
But they don't have to.
They don't have to on this, this type.
Did they, though?
No.
They didn't. Okay. So this is till May?
Until the elections.
And you get to address the board soon.
Oh, yeah, this is till May, right? And, but we have no, can I ask questions as far as qualifications that he may have?
You can, yeah, ask. What is it that you are concerned of?
Has he been on the housing board before?
Sir, no, he hasn't been on a housing board before.
Yeah. You were a state rep, I guess?
Yes.
One time?
Six, seven, eight years.
Yeah. And could I ask how you heard about the housing position?
Sir, you just got to address the board. I'm sorry, but technically, you got to address the board.
I'm looking that way. Cross-eyed.
To the board, it was conversations with your town administrator as I was soliciting some, some places where I might be able to offer some of my services as a resident and contribute to the ongoings of the town. And he had made mention that there was a vast void in the housing authority. And again, with my background from the state side, and just a recognition, and actually a fairly newfound interest in the goings-on of housing, housing stock, and housing availability for needed citizens of various categories. I thought this a wonderful opportunity, well, an opportunity for both myself and for the town to maybe get things running so they're not in this period of pause, as I understand there's one member that constitutes that board, which really isn't a board. Thank you.
Sound good enough?
He has no previous experience. We've been in this situation before, from through this board, if memory serves you.
Do you realize I had never been on a Board of Selectment before I came over here?
Well, I guess I was kind of...
Neither have I.
Me too.
Well... It was a rough road, and we learned through experience and asking questions and getting mentored by others and, you know, listen to townspeople, and you have varying opinions throughout the town.
Well, I think the evidence showed, you know, the performance is just, I believe that's why they're no longer on that board, so. I don't want to step into the shoes of the old situation. I think I've been in here several times, you know, discussing it, and, you know, I mean, we suffered up there for many years.
But with that thought pattern, we, we are all new, we, none of us had any experience doing this either.
Right.
And from your own words previously, when you've come here, you thought we were doing a pretty good job.
Oh, you guys are, yeah.
So...
Yeah, I'm not, not talking about you guys being good or bad. I'm bringing up history. We were in this exact situation, and it did not turn out well. I think as far as, I think you guys are aware of it.
So, so how about this? Think about it this way. We appoint him, and then when the election happens, you'll know enough about him, whether he's working out or not, to vote for him.
Right.
Because then you'll have your chance to say whether you like him or not, or if he's doing a good enough job or not.
It's just a couple months away.
Right, but he only needs a handful of people to get on the ballot, which is exactly what happened last time, and we've been suffering ever since. I don't want to repeat the same situation.
No, but they're different people, too.
Again, I know nothing of this gentleman.
And sometimes we got to take a leap of faith. We got to sit there and say, okay, this guy's new, he's different, let's give him a chance.
And maybe connect with him and talk about your concerns, too, if he's representing you.
If you're going to appoint him tonight, I can't, you know, it's kind of senseless, really.
No, it isn't.
That's what he's there for.
Yeah, yeah, then he can...
Only until the town vote.
Right.
So you have time to get to know him, and then vote or not vote for him.
I think this is probably the best situation, because you're not voting for somebody you completely don't know, and then that person's in there for the next three years or whatever.
But I think what I'm trying to say is, we never had an opportunity. The last time, this board appointed, and it did not work out well. And I just don't want to repeat that situ, I don't want to drag it out, I know you guys got a schedule, but I think there needs to be a different way to look at this. I don't want to repeat the same situation. It's not good up there. I think you guys are pretty aware of that. It's actually really bad.
And again, we have to give opportunity. We got to get people in those positions so they can make those changes for you. And we can't do that by not electing anybody or nominating anybody and keeping those positions empty, because then things won't get done if they're always empty.
I understand, but I also think we could wait for the right person.
Yeah, but no one else is stepping up. How many is on the board?
Well, you said that same thing here, nobody stepped up to you guys either, so, you know, look how good we made here. You know what I'm saying?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
You know, this position has been advertised on the town's website for probably over a month. So, you know, we've solicited, you know, we were successful with one candidate last week, you had appointed Travis Baker. You know, the executive director who was over there had made calls to the office, you know, asking for us to post this, to, to see if she can get a working board, because they, they can't operate right now. They don't have a working board. So, you know, there was a need from the executive director. She did contact us and asking us to post it, which we did, and I think we posted it well over a month.
That's a very good point, Jim, because we also have a brand-new executive director who has absolutely no housing experience whatsoever, making it even harder.
So again, think of it as a trial period. You got him for a few months. If you guys don't like the way he's working out, then don't vote for him. But if you do, vote for him.
Okay, last question. Has anybody checked, um, the history of vote with James, is it?
Mark Carron.
Mark Carron, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Has anybody checked the background?
No, we don't do background checks on elected officials.
Nobody Google?
We could.
Can you?
I'm more than happy to discuss my past events. That's fine.
Would you like?
I would let him come up and explain.
I'm just trying to get, we've had enough bad history up there.
Believe me, if we hesitated on every single person, every time we had a board that was emptied or something...
Yes.
We're happy when people want to step up and help.
Right, but the problem we have is you have no jurisdiction over that place, as you've said many times.
There's a few places we don't have any jurisdiction over, you know, we're not the all-controlling department of everything.
We are in a, what's the word, drier, not drier, dire situation, without any exaggeration. And that's, you know, 70-plus people up there that help this economy on a daily basis. Plus, we have 10, 12 aides that come in up there, those are jobs.
And you guys are in a dire situation because you don't have a board.
But we don't want to repeat what happened the last time.
Believe me, we don't want that to happen either.
Well, it happened, you know, and we don't want to repeat that. What do you got? You want to ask a question?
He had an incident long, long time ago about driving. Is that what you're concerned of?
That was one that was up, came up there. I don't know the gentleman. This isn't anything personal. I am looking...
It was like 20 years ago?
More than that.
Thirteen, thirteen years sober, thank you.
Congratulations.
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 That's awesome.
You look very drunk over here.
Black and white does that.
Is there any other questions?
No, that was it. There are some other things, but you're okay with that?
Yeah, people make mistakes.
Yeah, I know. We're, get to live with them every day up there.
People make mistakes, and you got to give people chances. Sometimes people, those make, those mistakes sometimes make people better. And you got to give them the opportunity to show that, and let them show you what, who they are, what they're made of, and, you know, like we said, he's getting it, he's going to have a couple months. You can get to know him. I'm sure you're going to make yourself available to talk to anybody, and he'll probably want to sit down with you and discuss anything and see what's going on. And if you don't like him after that couple months, you know, I wish we could do that with a lot of positions, give somebody a trial period and then say, yeah, this guy's not working out. You know, it's kind of a probationary period for you guys, so...
So overall, it's okay, we're going to have a, we have a director, if she stays, I don't know. But anyway, we have a director that has no experience in housing, and we're going to have this gentleman who has no past experience in housing. And that seems okay with you guys?
People got to learn the jobs. You know, unfortunately, these things, you don't, you're not born with this knowledge. You got to learn it. And it takes good residents like yourself to engage with these people and identify things that you've seen over the years and try to get some help.
Somebody behind me?
I'm talking to you. But you're a concerned resident, because you're here in front of us talking about it and discussing it, and that, that makes us happy, because we wish we had more people like you that cared.
We're not concerned only concerned, we are desperate. I don't know if you can, I don't know how else I can say that to you. It is a zoo up there. There are so many things happen up there that should not be happening, okay? But we have no recourse, you know? And you guys won't do anything, or you can't, which is fine. So we're not going to be in any different boat, is the point, I guess I'm trying to say, you know? We're going to have two people that have absolutely no experience, they got to learn all the rules, regulations. It just doesn't seem fair. And this has been dragging out since the last time you appointed a person, and that's what, what was it, over two years, three years? I don't even know, it was just so long ago. I don't see it being any different at this point.
So my question to you, sir?
Yeah.
Do you want to be appointed?
I'm not qualified, honest. If I thought I could do it, I would be gladly stepping up. But I'm being honest with you and myself, I don't have the capacity, you know? And I don't know if this gentleman is going to work out. I understand it's a toss-up. You say we can vote him in, or, but we couldn't vote the other person out, you know? It just doesn't seem right, so. I don't want to burden you with it, you know, you've got stuff to do, but I think maybe there needs to be a different way of approaching this. Maybe if you could take the time and do it. Again, nothing personal, like, first time I've seen this gentleman. It's just, we want to get somebody up there that can straighten things out up there. We're going to lose, I can't say too much on that. We're losing people up there, we can probably lose staff. Then you're going to be in a worse boat, you know? People don't want to be up there, and I don't blame them, so.
I would just say, if, if he is appointed tonight, sit down with him. Talk with him, give him a chance.
Yeah, I have nothing against this gentleman, he just has no experience.
If I might just, through, through the board...
Chair. Yes, go over here.
Come to the... I mean, these, listen to me.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And these questions should be actually in front of the housing authority, not to you. The absence of a housing authority leaves these, these concerns on the floor until there's some action, at least from the town side, to constitute a board so that it can be able ears in action to address these issues. And I think it's wonderful that you have questions, and it's not just being passed by. I am here, and I, there's no second for the position. It's just a heart for a town that I live in, and it probably doesn't look it, but I am aging a little bit.
We all are.
And housing of some sort may be an issue for me, but to many of my friends who I've known throughout, I do have a history with Warren, I love it, there's partnership, my fiance was from Warren, I forget how old I am, 45 years ago, that didn't go well. But I left, I didn't leave Warren as the responsible party for that. Again, it's out of an interest to contribute as a citizen of the town I live in, in this particular area. And if there is, and I would acquiesce, if there's somebody more qualified or somebody more comfortable for the residents who they feel they can address it to, that's all that matters. It's, it's relationships in action, and that's what I'm all about. And again, it's, I'm just saying I'm available to serve, so, you know, I appreciate, I'm humbled even with your consideration of my, my letter to let you know that I'm available. And, you know, I'll be upstairs, actually, Terrence?
Travis.
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 Forgive me, Travis, I know, forgive me, Travis, has actually just signed the nomination paper, but I'll go upstairs and talk to him, he wants to just do an update, so. I mean, I think it's, action gets action, inaction is going to continue with, I think, a resentment or a resonance of these types of complaints from your citizenry in this area, but to you and, and your constraint, because this isn't, there's an authority, and it's not yours, unfortunately, it's that board, so constitutes the board. And if there's a better way to constitute these boards, then it's an act of the legislature, and I'm more than happy to bring that with my past relationship with the legislature. If there's a petition that wants to be brought forward by this particular group of residents on behalf of this authority or as a member of authority, I don't mind making that petition either. I think it's probably more of a symptom or a, it's an illness out of inaction than it is action. And the positions need to be filled, yes, it needs to be constituted, personalities and qualifications of the right people, but it doesn't get there if it's not, if you don't make those appointments. Sometimes you have to go through a few. I didn't, I didn't marry my first girlfriend. Sometimes you have to go through a few to find out what, what chemistry actually works. And I'm just saying, at this period in time, I'm willing to help contribute for an analysis and by observation of those, if it does work, or it can be built on, so. Thank you for, thank you for...
Thank you, Mark.
Okay.
Actually, Chris has a good point.
How about we can have, sit down, as you suggested, discussion, and have Jim there for a half hour or whatever it may be, to see what is possible to do? Is that an option?
I'm available anytime.
If you guys coordinate it with Travis and Mr. Farrar, something might, Mr. Mark, something can...
That's fine, yeah. Because last time, I sat in front of Jim, he had just started, he was new, and he had a conversation over the phone with the former appointed person and elected, and he got ripped into a new, I don't think he thought I heard the phone call on the other side. And I didn't say anything, because, you know, he's new, and, but now you're locked in for three years, you're good.
Yeah, that's fine.
And this is all we're trying to do, we're trying to resolve an issue ongoing for two, three years, and you guys can't help us, that's the problem, you know?
Thank you very much for your concern.
Okay, I'm sure, no. I just want you to know, even though we're limited on authority, we are concerned, and we do care, and we want to make sure we set you guys up to succeed. Part of that is standing up the board that can listen to you guys and defend you at your own housing authority. Pushing it down the road and not, not giving you a board that can work with you guys just hurts you guys.
You can't do that when the person in charge of the board won't let you speak, okay? I've said that, I don't know how many times in here. I can give you a list, it's useless. We can try this, but I want it to be, as he suggested, I think it'd be a great idea if Jim would attend it, and let's try and get this thing resolved once and for all. Let's get the problems out and fix them. There are people up there, maybe a lot of people don't think so in this town, but there are some good folks up there, you know? And they don't deserve this, so.
Well, thank you again.
Yep, yep, thank you.
How can we set that up?
Call me anytime, Tim.
Okay.
Thank you, Tim. But it makes me wonder how many people have googled me.
I do it all the time, but...
Discussion with the highway surveyor.
No, hold on. You got to vote to table it, if you, if we're going to table it to next week.
Let's have a motion.
Brief discussion.
Okay.
And you should hear from anybody else also. You heard from one resident, I would open it up to anybody else that would want to talk, since you had one resident speak.
Anybody else in the public who has any other comments or in Zoom? Any questions?
No.
You're good?
All right. I'll do a motion to table to our next meeting, the appointment of Mr. Mark J. Carron. It's Carron?
Carron.
Do I hear a second?
Well, I don't know why you're tabling it. What's your reason?
Opposition from a resident, because they want to speak, right?
Okay.
Is that what was agreed to? Is that what you were looking for, is speaking within a week and then talking to him?
Can we appoint him?
If he's going to be here, that would be, if he's going to be there along with Travis and, I forget the name of the other person, that would be...
Mr. Farrar?
Yeah, with Mr. Farrar, that'd be great. I mean, a week isn't going to make a whole lot of difference.
That's what you're asking us to do, is table it so you can talk with them?
I would, I think that would be the way, way to go, yes. Is it okay with Mark if we table it for a week?
If I, if I might.
Don't forget, he's a politician.
Oh, no, no, I'm not, that's, there's a reason for that, too. It probably doesn't fit my qualification. I just, with all due respect, I'm not sure I understand the wisdom in that. At that point, I'll just be a resident like anybody else, and by virtue of nomination papers, a candidate for the position, it's more of a candidate's form, but I have, will have no ability to act. The board still is without the ability to act. These residents who have concerns are voicing it to people who can't do anything about it, yet we're, we're listening to, and I, and I mean this out of consideration for you... yet we're listening to, and I mean this out of consideration for you, sir, concerns that are present right now. The reason for the letter for the, you know, for the consideration for the appointment, so there would be an ability to act immediately, whether that's just to hear or just to make an appointment after flushing out an issue respectfully, to take some action. But that happens with the authority, not here with the select board. That doesn't mean it's an issue. We just understand the separation of powers. So, I mean, I'm, again, I'm a resident of town. I want the best thing to happen for the town that I live in, pay taxes to, and stake the, you know, stake in the ground for. And I'm ready to start at any point. There's no ulterior, I have no other ulterior motivations. My significant other probably is looking forward to some time of mine out of the house, as we can all kind of appreciate, as we have our energies. But so that it's being put to good use and really, that's it. I mean, there's no stipend for this. No one's gonna get rich. It's just to make my, hopefully make life for my neighbors a little bit better, to your concern and to your sentiment. So, whatever you decide to do, I'm ready to serve at any point if asked and/or if the public will have me, so. Thank you. And I'm gonna...
Can I say one more thing? One more thing on that?
You're gonna open it up to the public again, so others can speak, too. Opened up the can of worms again.
Okay, so, yeah, we're gonna open it up to the public again, Tim. Come in Travis, you're next.
So, listen, we haven't had representation for two years. A week more isn't gonna hurt us. So, I would like you to consider that. I want to make sure, if we can, after we have a discussion with four or five people, Travis, that if we feel that Mike is a good candidate, a week isn't gonna hurt anything. I don't think so. We haven't had anybody for two years, guys. We've had five different management groups up there. It's been a nightmare. And we don't want to continue that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Travis?
Travis Baker, right, got appointed to the housing authority last week. By having sat through their meetings through, you know, the last two years, I understand Tim's concern that, you know, the previous boards and a lot of issues going on there. Right now, the board only has two members. There's not even quorum to sign bills. They're sending their bills to the state and their warrants to the state to be signed. ED, executive director, can only do so many things without a board, which is stalling many, many things for them at the moment. And, you know, I understand Tim's concern is at the right person, but realistically, we're a small town. You know, as Jim said, we waited a month for people and it's been two of us. You know, and elections are coming up, so whoever's elected is, you know, you're stuck with that person even, even if they don't work out because they're elected. So, I think in all fairness, to be able to get things going and, you know, moving along for the housing authority, yes, a week doesn't seem like a lot, but how many things that need to be done? And typically meeting, they only meet once a month, so you have maybe one meeting this month, maybe one next month before election time. It's quite a few things that could be taken care of for that authority in that time. That's just gonna get delayed, pushing it off even further, so.
So Travis, do you see a plus in appointing him tonight?
I, yes. We, ideally, we could start rolling out a first meeting for the housing authority a lot sooner. If, you know, we wait till next week to appoint, earliest we can have a meeting is a week after. But then that's putting a lot of pressure on the ED and everybody to try to put all this stuff together to have a meeting that can actually go somewhere. So I think it'd be better for everybody and, you know, where it's what, two months on the appointment before election? It, yeah, six weeks, it gives a decent amount of time, you know, for everybody to decide, do we want to vote for him or do we not? See how he does.
Thank you, Travis.
Yep.
Anybody else? Nobody in Zoom?
One more.
But very little.
Very little.
I think Ray wants to speak.
Ray Capaco, resident. I'm aghast. This is not the way to run business. You've got a valid candidate before you. Appoint him. Why are we, just because a resident objects, and no offense, he's got his opinion, he's totally entitled to his opinion. But you've got a valid candidate. He's only gonna be serving for seven weeks, maybe eight. And there's an election. Why is there a suggestion, Dave, that just because there's a resident objecting, you implicate the town administrator in a board that he has no involvement with?
I'm not implicating anybody.
Sounds to me like the agreement was to have Jim Ferrera join Tim and Mr. Karen and Travis and whoever else is on the board and have a sit-down, a little discussion about whether he's qualified or not.
That's what the resident asked about.
No, I know, but I heard the board basically agreeing and deferring a vote tonight that they were gonna not make a decision. When there's plenty of other times, if all I knew was taking objection when you guys do act on things that you shouldn't be, I wish it was that simple. This is ridiculous. It's 6:35. For a simple appointment to the housing authority, which you guys have nothing else to do with other than get someone on there so they can do things like Travis talked about.
You're completely right.
I'm aghast. Please act like you're the selectmen and do what's right.
Thank you, sir.
So, first of all, I understood that Jim was gonna help with the problems, maybe just sit in.
That's what I thought.
Not vet a candidate. So that's not right.
No, that wasn't correct at all.
I guess that's why I was surprised we were thinking of tabling it, so I, yeah, he...
No, just table it to next week to do the vote on a nomination. That's what I thought was being portrayed to us.
Yeah, yeah.
But...
I think, I think we just do an up or down vote. I think, as expressed many times, it's a short period to the election. I think get, again, action over non-action. Get somebody on there. If Jim can sit down with the board and throw ideas out, I don't really know what exactly is planned, but, yeah. You know, just help out a little bit. But then you can't get too involved. You gotta be careful, right? You know, we have no authority, but you can certainly listen to people and you offer suggestions. You have a mountain of experience. So, yeah.
Okay, Tim, very short.
Yeah, so to Ray's comment, half hour is too long. But we sat here one night, five and a half hours for a dark area. Are we not worth it, Ray?
Sir, you gotta, you gotta address the board.
Come on, Ray. Look, if he can't come back in a week, then we don't want him. Plain and simple. A week isn't gonna do anything for this gentleman. So, that would be a good sign that he's not gonna be the right candidate, okay? And a week for elections and all that is a bunch of baloney. We haven't had anybody up there for two years. We got major problems, okay? And we're gonna have two people that have no experience whatsoever. That's the director and this gentleman, and the other one's really on a lot better.
Thank you.
Okay.
Did Joe have anything to say? No? Thought he was gonna say something.
I think we, we appointed Travis. Travis doesn't have any experience, except attending meetings. So I don't know how it differs. And I, Travis has a good heart and is willing to get in there and do stuff. He works his butt off on cable, you know? So, and frankly, I don't see Mark being any different. He sounds like he's competent, he's eager. I don't know. It just, I think it's a good...
I agree. I think it gives him a trial period.
Yeah.
If they don't like him. And it gives him the position where he can step into it and help out and do some votes and actually talk to the residents in the position. And if they don't like him after the couple months, they're gonna have an opportunity to vote. And they can vote for him or not vote for him, and it's up to the residents. But I agree, not having the board is kind of hindering them. And even a week matters because it pushes everything back more and more and more. And if he can't make next week, that's two weeks now.
Yeah.
And it just hurts the board and it hurts them overall if we don't have a board or that position filled, so.
So with all the respect I have for Tim, I believe this time, I wanna, my vote is to appoint him today, tonight.
Okay, so we're not tabling it and we're gonna move forward.
You didn't get a second, so no.
Okay, okay, just, that's off the line.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So I'll make a motion to appoint Mark J. Karen until May 6, 2025, to the Warren Housing Authority.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Rich Acker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion approved.
Congratulations, sir.
You have to get sworn in by the town clerk.
Congratulations.
Watch out for court.
Discussion with the highway surveyor regarding the use of Chapter 90 funds for current and future road projects and the portion amount for fiscal year 2026 in the amount of $492,277.86?
I believe he's on Zoom.
Yeah.
Your background's very dark.
Oh, sorry.
Good evening. Jeremy Olson, Warren Highway Surveyor. So, yeah, but what do you guys want to know, I guess, what I have planned this year or... Okay, pretty, pretty simple project list this year for Chapter 90. We, the only new project happening is going to be East Road. We're gonna do a preservation project on it, which is very similar to what we did with Old West Warren Road last year. Also with, it's crossed Columbus, Lower Town Farm and Lower Reynolds Road. East Road is a relatively decent shaped road at this point in time, but it's showing its age rapidly and the best way to slow that down, I feel, is this preservation process, which we were very successful with last year. It fared through a really, really nasty winter so far very well, even with all the frost heaves and everything. It is a liquid asphalt with rubber mixed into it. And then they press in a stone chip seal. So it's three-eighths granite stone driven in. It's about two, three-quarters of an inch thick or so on average. And it does extend the life seven to 10 years on most roads, as long as the road's in halfway decent shape, which East Road is. It's a really good candidate. I'm not choosing any other projects this year for our funds because I would actually, I'm trying to build up the account a bit for possibly next year with another large sum of money to look at doing a big section of Southbridge Road over. But that's gonna take a very big chunk of money. And so for right now, we're just gonna do the preservation. I got two other big projects ongoing, one involving Mass DOT. We're working on Route 19. I've been working and talking to them for two years for that project and very excited that they chose us to redo basically two miles of Route 19 from downtown to where it passes underneath the turnpike. That project, they're funding that project. It's not Chapter 90. We are responsible for doing all the prep work for that project, though. So myself and the crew are gonna be extremely busy for the next few months getting that road ready to go. And then after that, we also have to finish the top section of Coy Hill, which is funded by ARPA funds that we received from the state through MEMA, working on, you know, with them for the disaster relief from the 2021 July storms that washed out nine different roads. The funding we still have is good for a couple more years. So we're putting that to good use on Coy Hill. But so as far as Chapter 90, it's a small, relatively small project cost-wise. I'm hoping to keep it under $200,000 for just over two miles of road. So, again, that will hopefully, you know, hold over nearly $300,000 to put towards next year. If we get another nearly $500,000. Maybe if we pick up some other funds along the way, we can hopefully do a pretty good chunk of Southbridge Road, which is, there are sections of that road that are really in need. It's one of the heaviest-traveled local roads we have. And, but it takes a big chunk of money to really do anything good with that road. So like I said, I'm holding most of this year's funds till next year where we can do a pretty good piece of that road over.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No. Great job, Jeremy. You guys, you and the highway department have done an amazing job, and thank you very much.
Rich?
All right.
Yep, I concur. Jeremy's doing an awesome job and a lot of good progress this year, last year. Things look great.
So having no more discussion, we let him go?
Yeah, he probably wants to get some sleep so he can get up to the next project.
Thank you, Jeremy. Have a good one.
All right, thank you, guys. Have a great one.
You, too. Next, we have a discussion on the first right of refusal for a property known as Map 3, Lot 43, and Map 6, Lot 7.1, as shown on the GIS map of the town of Warren, anticipated vote.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have somebody, Mr. Fountain here representing the first right of refusal.
I think Jim, wait a minute. Jim Fountain, resident. Planning Board signed these off the other night, these plans, so it's the same plans, just those three lots just from the...
Just, just new board, so.
I know.
Yeah, no, same people, but so everybody out there knows, we still gotta go over and talk about it.
The lawyer sent over all the paperwork that was needed today. I think everybody got what they were supposed to have. So I really don't have anything other than just what I already did, so. Oh, you already got it, Terry?
Thank you, Jim.
No problem.
So, and you can back me up on this, the lots are here?
No, on the other side of the road.
Where are they, Jim? Are they here?
North side, going up, up, up.
So one of them is, I don't know why that's divided. There should be, this is actually two lots. There is, one of them is right here, whoops, and the other two are right here. So that, that shouldn't be a line there. That should be, that's actually two lots, and that lot continues into here.
Can you zoom in more?
Yeah. Oh, boy, this is really sensitive. Oh, there you go, more.
There you go.
I can see the three lots over there.
Yeah, somebody, just to draw them out, but there's, this is actually two lots, so I'm just buying one of these here, and there's two here.
Okay.
Those are next to the other two that we've done already, so. We got some potential...
Put some houses in?
We are.
Awesome.
So can you confirm it's Map 3, Lot 43, and Map 6, Lot 7.1?
Would that be on here? I would assume it was.
Just because I had a little trouble finding it on the assessor maps, I just wanted to...
Probably not updated yet.
It would probably be in the Map 6, right? Is that what you just said? Map 6, Lot 7.1?
Yeah, and then Map...
The other one's there, Map 3, Lot 43.2.
So 43.2.
No?
No.
No, I'm wrong, wrong. Okay, it's Lot B. There's gotta be part of this lot, 7.1, Map 6. So Lot C and Lot B, and then the other one was... I don't know if they're not identified the way that I would have...
But they are, that is the...
Okay.
Yes.
So the only thing is the motion part is wrong because it should be 7.1.
Yeah.
Not 7.
7.1?
Yeah.
So Map 6?
So map six, and then forty-three point two, right?
No, I think it's.
No.
Forty, just forty-three.
Just forty-three.
Should be all map three.
Cause forty-three is this big piece here.
Map three, lot forty-three.
Yeah.
Map six, lot seven point one.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure it was on correct.
Okay. I think we're good. Do we have any?
No, I.
Interest on it?
No, I don't, I don't think we do.
Nope, nope, it's above, above the land that we're looking at. It has nothing to do with anything we're gonna be doing down.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to waive the right of first refusal for the property known as map three, lots forty-three, and map six, lot seven point one.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye, motion approved.
Thank you, that's with three lots, right? You're down with three, right?
Mm-hmm.
Does that cover?
Covers all three.
Lot forty-three and lot seven point one.
Yeah, that's only two. What's the third?
You might have that more so on his description from the lawyer.
Sixty-one.
What is it?
Hey, if you look on this, the page that looks like this that you're supposed to sign, I think we're supposed to say sixty-one A and sixty-one. Sixty-one A and sixty-one B.
Oh, that's the type that it's in.
Oh, that's the type, okay.
Yeah, that's the chapter we're taking out of.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Nope, that covers it all, plan of the lot, map three, lot forty-three, and six, lot seven point one, that's what it says.
From your attorney.
It doesn't say three?
No, Jimmy, wanna say?
There was an amendment, you sent the amendment also, you should have the amendment also, you don't have that?
No, this is all I have.
Cause the.
This is what we got?
Yes, he did say, he did say he sent the amendment to.
To which lot?
Well.
Or to the whole thing?
What originally happened, we were supposed to just be buying two, and then we ended up buying three.
What's the third one, though?
Well, there's lot number, it's lot C, lot B, and lot forty-three point one, I don't know why the difference like that, but that could be error.
I think we, can I suggest rescinding the previous motion and then going, Jim, could you?
It's not, it's lot A, B, and C.
Yeah, could you hand me that? Cause the problem is, we're, we're giving right of first refusal to a twenty acre piece of land as opposed to these little one acre or two acre lots. So what we, we may wanna do.
Identify the lots.
Is, yeah, you know, base it on this plan, it's lot A, B, C.
This one, this one, and this one.
Should be lot A, consist of one point zero six acres. Lot B consists of one point zero seven four acres, and lot C consisting of one point zero six six acres.
Yeah, the first one is.
Yeah, no, this is, this is twenty point nine acres.
Yeah, okay.
And then the other one is.
Alright, no, it's, it's right here on this, on this order, right here.
Mister Chair?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a motion to rescind the previous motion?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye.
Okay, do you mind if I make this motion?
Nobody. Well, wh- which lots up there are you actually?
They don't.
Well, they're showing three, they're not showing up.
No, because they, that's the online version of it. It won't exist until that is recorded, yeah. So it's this, and that last one is cut in, in two.
It's coming out of the twenty acres.
So it's all coming out of one, forty-three technically is.
But we don't wanna give the whole twenty acres away at this point.
Right, no, but that's what, the first one was.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Alright, alright.
I wanted to make sure that it was.
Thank you for that, alright.
Yeah, thank you, but I don't have that.
Okay, he said he did send it, I, I spoke to him before I come to the meeting today.
And then maybe it's in on my computer.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to waive the first right of refusal on the following plots. On the plan that we have, the A and R, it was dated three ten twenty-five, approved by the planning board. So lot A consisting of one point oh four six acres, lot B consisting of one point seven four acres, and lot C consisting of one point zero six six acres all along Town Farm Road.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye, motion approved.
Think we got it. Yeah.
Okay, but, yeah, I'm gonna have to make sure I get the right paperwork because according to this, it's not the right paperwork. So I'll have him sign it afterwards.
Okay.
Okay? Travis, I'll have you come back after, after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could you just use this one?
It's in the packet.
What was it?
And that one's good.
Which are you looking at?
One of the.
The ones you signed?
Second to last page of the packet.
Is that the one you got?
Well, that's what I was re- trying to read, and somebody said, no, that's not right.
That's a signature page, that, I don't think that's a signature.
Although it doesn't really list like the lot.
That is a signature.
Oh, it says proposed lot A, B, and C, okay, well, we did the right thing then.
Yep, we did.
I think we can.
So now, I do need Travis back.
Why do you need Travis?
Because it has to be notarized, and he's a notary.
Oh, wow, well, I mean, we could do it later.
Okay, we'll do it later.
Did you get some, did you, oh, wait, no.
You have to do it.
That's not the signature page.
Yeah.
Cause that's H. Olson, you have the signature one, right?
I do.
I signed you, okay. That might be worth something someday.
Alright.
Yeah, we're good.
Fire chief, please report.
Quite a meeting today, huh?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Adal Boy, fire chief, thank you for having, for, uh, having me into this evening. Uh, my February two thousand twenty-five report, we responded to forty-nine fire incidents in February of two thousand twenty-five that included seven motor vehicle accidents, seven medical assists, four activated alarms, five calls that were canceled, eight service or assist calls, one power line incident, one investigation, one electrical equipment issue, four structure fires, one oil burner issue, two mutual aid requests, two illegal burns, three carbon monoxide issues, two water sprinkler activations, and one gas emergency. We responded to sixty-seven EMS calls in February of two thousand twenty-five, and eight ALS intercepts were required. We conducted three smoke and CO inspections, two propane tank inspections. In terms of our activities and meetings, uh, Warren EMS had a vert- had a virtual training on, with an on-call review from Bay State Health, um, on-call review, excuse me, with Bay State Health, uh, reviewing some of the, our more, uh, high acuity calls, um, and make sure everyone's doing the protocols right and everything. So, uh, they, that's always a great training, and, and the members enjoyed that one. Warren fire personnel began their first responder refresher program, uh, this is something we're gonna do, we did over last month, and we'll be finishing up this month, it's quite an extensive program that requires twenty-eight hours of, uh, continuing education that happens every three years, that we're required to make sure that all of our firefighters are, are qualified as first responders, they can assist on ambulance calls if needed, and, and, uh, you know, in, in different medical capacities. Um, one thing that I didn't mention in here that I, I do wanna mention is that we have received most of our hoses and appliances at this point, so we're slowly putting them, putting them on all the trucks, in fact, they're, uh, the, the crew's doing one truck tonight while I'm here. Um, so most of that stuff is in, we're just waiting on a few other things to hopefully complete that project. And, uh, you know, most of, the vast majority of that money will be coming back to the town, uh, because we receive most of it on the grant. We still have a couple of things we have to purchase, but I would estimate at least, you know, probably about eighty-five percent of that money's gonna come right back to the town after we have everything, so that's fantastic. Um, no major budget issues that I'm, I'm seeing at this point, everything seems to be in line, and in line items seem to be, uh, where they should be, so.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
You had any questions?
No, great job.
Yeah, we've been super busy lately.
You guys have been really busy today.
We've had very busy in, in general, we've had several chimney fires, a structure fire the, just the other day, so March has started out like, uh, like crazy, and I think it's gonna be a very interesting brush fire season again this year, so it's, uh, we're very much in critical drought. And, uh, people, I just wanna remind people, please, please be careful, because we've already had brush fires already this year, we're starting to see them pop up. I wouldn't be surprised if the state of Massachusetts actually considers shutting down burning early this year because of it, so. Supposed to get some, you know, much needed rain this weekend, hopefully that will help bring down the, uh, but every day we're watching that fire weather, and we've been shutting down burning when we had to, you know, for safety reasons, so, yeah, please be careful out there.
Thank you, chief, for keeping us safe.
Thank you.
Mercy management report.
Jimmy. Good evening, uh, Jim McKeon, mercy management director, my, uh, February mercy management report. Uh, February second, we tested the Warren sirens, uh, everything's normal there. Um, then we started with our winter storms, um, February eighth and ninth, we had about four inches of snow, but most of the snow occurred on the weekends, uh, overnight, so it didn't affect commutes and just kept us crews working all night long. Um, and then, uh, February fourteenth, uh, this, uh, CERT, team members helped the Parks Department, uh, they had a Valentine's Day dance out back below gym area. Uh, though this one was, um, more of a parking issue, cause we had, uh, all the parents stay, and it was, it came at the end, there was really no place to park. But we found places for everyone to park, and, uh, maybe we'll have a little bit more organized next time. Uh, hopefully we have the field next time too, it, cause of, cause of the snow, we couldn't park any cars on the field. Um, but every, the event went great.
I have to say, you guys did a really good job on that event.
Yeah.
We attended it, it was packed.
Yes, it was.
That was a good event, and Parks Department, Danielle Fountain, did an amazing job.
Wasn't the decorations gorgeous?
Huh?
The decorations were great.
Decorations were gorgeous, there were a ton of people there, parents, everybody had fun, everybody had a really good time. And you guys from CERT did an amazing job getting everybody squeezed in there, and there wasn't a spot you could've squeezed anything in. You couldn't have put a piece of paper in this parking lot because there were so many cars in here, oh, like, you guys did good, good job.
Okay, uh, then February fifteenth, February sixteenth, another winter storm came in, uh, that was three to five inches of snow. Um, so that built on top of the previous week's snow. Uh, but this time, it was a little warmer and a little more ice mixed in, and then we had a flash freeze that turned everything to a glacier. And which made it difficult for snow cleanup the following week, which was only, uh, another good thing was the, uh, was during school vacation week, so that helped, less commute, less traffic on the roads. Um, though everything was quite hazardous for a week or so between sidewalks, even people's, uh, properties and stuff, they had quite a hard time. Um, but luckily, it all melted away, pretty much, we're on the way to spring, I think. It's every, every spring coming, I always get a cold, as you know, my, my voice, may hear my voice, so, I got my sickness.
Wait till second winter hits us.
Just jinxed us.
I, I, I don't think there's a second winter coming, I think we're done. I think we're done, I'll say it, I'll, I'll say it in public, I think we're done. Okay, on to the next one. Uh, February twenty-seventh, I attended the, uh, regional planning committee meeting, uh, which we held at the North Brookfield Fire Station between the towns of all the Brookfields, Warren, and Spencer. Um, started talks, so having, uh, with a consultant that's working on plans with the hazmat and tier-two facility information. Um, we'd be able to hire this person because of the grant we got through that committee. Warren's only benefiting from this, we don't have to do much grant work or anything. The only other thing, uh, probably gonna come through a future selectmen's meeting to, uh, adapt, adopt those, uh, drafted bylaws, I think I brought them to maybe two months ago or so. So once they get signed in, each town's gonna do that, that'll be upcoming. And then, uh, February twenty-sixth, um, volunteers began to go through our shelter equipment located at the high school, perform inventory, checking on all items, replace, and we'll be replacing expired items, um, as needed in coming time. That's pretty much what I have.
Thank you, Jim. Any, guys have any questions?
No.
Good job.
Yeah.
Are you still looking for members?
Uh, yes, any, anytime, any people, I'll take, uh, any.
So if anybody's looking for something to do and help out the town?
Even in our shelter operations, and, you know, we, we had to run a large-scale shelter operation, we would need volunteers, so yes.
How are, how are your drone skills and how do you feel now?
Well, with all this wind, it's been a little difficult, uh, hopefully the wind dies down and we can fly that drone more in the spring.
Good. Cautious pilots are good, are better than.
Yes.
Adventures.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna review and discuss Warren articles, uh, for the June twelfth, twenty twenty-six, especially annual town meeting with the, with a possible vote to open both warrants, anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, members of the board, uh, before you this evening, uh, is the first draft of, of warrants, uh, for the special in the upcoming annual town meeting on, uh, June twelfth. Um, these are some of the requests that I have received, uh, from various, uh, departments. Um, and, uh, the FinCom, uh, has started, uh, reviewing, uh, these requests. Um, and, um, capital planning has a, a chunk of, uh, requests that are not incorporated into the, this draft as of yet, um, because capital planning is still, you know, still reviewing those. Um, so, um, I would anticipate, um, the articles to, uh, get updated, um, for the next coming up weeks as FinCom finishes their review, as, uh, capital planning starts their review. Um, you know, there, 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 there may be some interchanging of some articles in here. Um, the special, uh, seems relatively light so far. Um, you know, there's a request from, uh, Parks and Rec for, um, fireworks, um, that, um, last year they didn't have the fireworks. Um, and fireworks, uh, for, um, the town got rescheduled a couple times. Um, and so therefore, uh, the money got turned back in, into free cash. And so now, uh, the town has to reappropriate the money for fireworks that are gonna be happening in June of this year, hopefully. Um, so, um, that will be for, actually that will be for technically fiscal year twenty-four, but it will happen in fiscal year twenty-five. And then there will be a subsequent article at the annual to address, um, uh, the fireworks for fiscal year twenty-six. Um, so that's that. Uh, Article two is a prior year fiscal year bill for, uh, Vanpool Transportation, as we had mentioned, uh, at the last meeting. Um, there was, uh, the month of May that wasn't paid last year, uh, we paid June, we paid April, um, and they don't, the way they set up their billing is, is they don't say that there's a previous balance, uh, until months later. Um, so, um, we didn't realize that, uh, May wasn't paid, so we have to take care of that obligation. There's gonna be a snow and ice deficit, as the board had, um, indicated, uh, and allowed for the highway surveyor to, um, to deficit spend in snow and ice, we, we're still waiting on the final accounting of all of that. We're anticipating another few weeks, once all the bills shake out, we'll have a number to plug in there for the deficit. Um, and Article four is, uh, to transfer, uh, to take care of, uh, an anticipated deficit in the, um, advanced life support for the fire department for five thousand dollars. That is a, a line that is totally unpredictable, um, it's based on call volume and so on and so forth. Uh, what we're predicting, the, uh, the fire chief. Um, it's based on call volume and so on and so forth. Uh, what we're predicting, the, uh, the fire chief is, is projecting, uh, the need for $5,000 in that line. So that wraps up the special for right now. Um, the annual, um, there's some, uh, you know, standard, uh, articles that are, uh, are on the annual. Uh, the first couple ones are standard. Uh, number, uh, Article 3 is the new, uh, proposed wage classification plan. Um, the salaries, uh, Sewer Department has some articles here, uh, they would like to use some of their retained earnings, uh, to address, uh, some capital projects, capital needs. Um, there's a Article 9, uh, we have funded OPEB for the last, uh, two years, um, since we've created that account. I would encourage the town to continue to fund OPEB, um, at, at, at minimally the same amount that we've done the last two years. So there's a commitment of the town of $25,000 to OPEB. Uh, there's a commitment also here, Article 10, uh, on the levy system to continue to fund the levy, uh, maintenance to the levy. Um, $25,000, that's the same commitment that we've had the last year. Um, the Levy Committee has been addressing some of the needs and has spent down some of the $25,000, uh, for, that was allocated last year already. Um, ongoing maintenance for town buildings, uh, uh, we're asking for the same use of free cash for $25,000 to address, uh, you know, continued maintenance, uh, in all of our town buildings, not making it restrictive to one building, but to any of the town buildings. Uh, we're going to be using up the entire $25,000, uh, this year. Um, so we're, we're, we're confident that we can continue to address maintenance concerns, um, for town buildings, uh, next year. Uh, Article 12, uh, is something new, uh, I think it needs to be addressed in terms of, um, taking care of, um, some inequities, uh, when it comes to, um, our custodian. Um, and, um, those inequities is that I think we need to put some money aside for, uh, some, a uniform allowance for, for Mike. Uh, a, as well as, um, some money aside for the use of his personal vehicle, uh, as he travels daily, uh, to and from all of our five municipal buildings. Um, I think a small stipend of $1,000, um, is fair and equitable, uh, to, uh, to take care of those needs for Mike. Article 13, um, is, uh, the Heroes Act legislation, working with the, uh, Board of Assessors, uh, to increase, um, our exemptions for our veterans, uh, for, for, um, a very important, um, aspect of our population, our veterans. Uh, and to give them a relief when it comes to, uh, to, to property taxes, tax relief. So there's a, there's a new legislation, it, it requires a local acceptance on the local level. Um, I'm hopeful that, uh, we can get that, uh, passed for our veterans, uh, at a town meeting there. Article 14 is, uh, is standard, uh, any excess, uh, in regional transportation, uh, will be, uh, sent back to the town. Um, if there is, uh, an excess, we've had that, that article on for some time now. Um, in some years we, we, we have been getting some, uh, excess back. Article 15 is the reauthorization of spending limits, uh, for, um, the revolving fund accounts. Um, there's been, you know, DLS, the Division of Local Services has said, you know, one year you have to re, uh, reauthorize the revolving funds. Other years they say, no, you don't. Um, I put it on there just as, as, as a placeholder. We may not have to do that anymore, but I'm, I'm going to look that up to see if we, if we have to do that, but it is there for a placeholder. Doesn't hurt if we do, um, but it certainly would hurt if we, if we didn't have it and we needed to do it. Article 16 is, uh, for the, for the treasurer, for the, uh, perpetual care accounts for the Pine Grove Cemetery. That's a standard article that the treasurer puts on. Uh, Article 17, another standard article for the treasurer, a vote to authorize the treasurer entering to, uh, compensating balance agreements for fiscal year 26, that's a standard article. Um, Article 18, Board of Health had asked, uh, to address, um, six, uh, new gas monitoring ports that need to be installed at the transfer station. They have gotten a quote, uh, from their, uh, engineering firm Barton and Le Judice, and they're estimating that project to take care of, um, is at $30,000 and that is a, a mandate, uh, from the DEP. Um, so we're, we're trying to get that, uh, resolved and taken care of. Article 19, um, is to raise and appropriate, uh, $20,000 to create a new highway payroll line within the highway department to allow part-time on-call employees to assist with construction projects. Um, you know, that is being proposed by the highway surveyor, um, that is under review, uh, from, um, the Finance Committee as well as these other articles. Um, we'll have some more information on that. Uh, Article 20, to see if the town will vote to transfer receives reserve for appropriation highway equipment fund. The sum of $15,000 to this highway surplus auction line, that's a standard article, um, that, uh, the highway surveyor Jeremy puts on. Uh, he's looking to purchase, uh, some, uh, highway equipment. Um, being very, uh, very, uh, unique in, 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 in a good way to try to, um, stretch the dollar as, as, as far as he can, um, and this is a good way of doing it. Um, Article 21, um, the fireworks for fiscal year 26. And Article 22 is from the fire department, uh, to address some turnout gear for, uh, some new members of $8,000. Those are the articles that I've received so far. There's some capital articles that are not incorporated yet as capital planning hasn't finalized their review yet.
Thank you, Jim. You guys have any questions? Comments?
We're going to make a motion to open the warrants?
Yeah.
Richard, you bid?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to open both warrants for the annual and special town meetings.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David DuFreny, aye.
Richard Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, thank you.
Review and discuss the copier lease and the options with possible vote to entry into a new three-year lease and service agreement with the New England Business Machines, anticipated vote.
Mr. Chairman, um, so what I'm doing is, is that, um, I, I, I'm in the process of getting some additional quotes. So I just put this on for, for discussion purposes in terms of, you know, where, I just wanted to update the board where we are. Um, so we're not going to really take a vote on it tonight. Um, but I, I, I do want to let the board know that I've reached out to two other, uh, entities to, to get some quotes for used, uh, copy equipment that's three years old, that is similar to the equipment that we have. Um, to see if the price is going to be, you know, comparable or, or better. Um, and so I, I'd ask that this be tabled until the next meeting and so I can get those quite, uh, uh, price quotes.
Miss, okay, you guys?
Yep.
Yes, good.
Okay, so we'll table this.
Thank you.
For the information and the update?
Yep.
Warrants and bills.
Okay. I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants, payroll number 25 for $115,081.91. Accounts payable number 36 for $67,850.38. Accounts payable number 36A for $294,617.8.
Good, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David DuFreny, aye.
Richard Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Motion approved. Next, bills.
Make a motion to pay the following bills, Weston and Sampson for $17,872. Modern Pest for $117. Warren Electric for $198.35. Comcast for $279.89. WB Mason for $290.51. Stericycle for $128.86. American Tower for $2,288. City of Northampton Smith College for $6,949. Van Poel for $3,735.34. National Grid for $1,812.7. Renaissance Alliance Insurance Services LLC for $1,027.72. And Verizon for $510.
Mr. Chairman, it, it's, it's not Smith College, it's Smith Vocational.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, right.
So on the motion for Smith, uh, City of Northampton Smith College, I redact that and change that to City of Northampton, Smith Vocational for $6,949.0.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David DuFreny, aye.
Richard Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved. We don't have any minutes tonight? It's time for the time administrator review.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's been a very busy week here, uh, uh, in, in town. Uh, we had the auditors in here this week. Uh, they started in on Monday morning, uh, bright and early, um, Roselli, Clark and Associates. Uh, we had three auditors in here Monday, Tuesday, uh, and, uh, one gentleman was here on Wednesday. Um, I had, as I had indicated to the board, uh, I wrote, um, Tony Roselli, the, the, the primary partner at, uh, Roselli and Clark, a letter, uh, addressing all of the, um, uh, comments, um, there weren't many, um, comments that he had from the last year's, um, audit as opposed to this year's, uh, when he started this year's audit. And what progress we've made to address some of, uh, uh, the comments that were made in, in, in last year's management letter. He was very appreciative of that and he was kind of surprised that, that we had taken the time to, uh, address those, those issues. Um, uh, and, um, it shows that our commitment, uh, to, um, you know, an outside auditor i- is very strong in that we value what the auditor has to say. And it's not just, you know, all talk, it's, it's behind, you know, show that what we have done in the last year to address, um, just the comments. There's no findings, but comments that the auditor had made. And so, um, I think that, uh, that will, um, um, bode well for, um, uh, our commitment and our display of commitment that we have for, uh, taking his comments seriously. So I, I did provide the board with a copy of the letter that I, I wrote to, uh, to Roselli and Clark for your review. Um, I, I do also want to, uh, mention in my, uh, weekly report, uh, that, um, I did, uh, I, we will have to update the, um, one of the budget items in the technology, annual fees and supplies, um, for the additional computers that we are going to have being monitored by, um, um, by Entree. And also for, um, data backup. We, we currently get one terabyte of data as part of our plan. And if we go over the terabyte of data, we are charged $75 every, you know, every increment over that terabyte. And so in order-
How many increments? Another terabyte? $75 for another terabyte?
Yes.
Or?
Yes, yes, for every terabyte over. And so, um, you know, that can be, that can be obviously costly. And so we are right at that threshold of a terabyte. Um, and so if we go over that terabyte, um, then we will have to pay that additional $75 every month or potentially more, you know, if it's two terabytes, then it's, you know, three terabytes, then it, you know, every si- every terabyte is 75. So, uh, there's a cloud backup dado, um, system that they've, uh, identified as a solution, uh, to that. Um, and our MSP provider, uh, is recommending that. Um, and so we would pay a fixed, um, cost of $260. Um, so that if we go over that, it would, um, allow us to have that, that backup. Because we have to save these, um, these, all the emails are considered public records, so we have to save them for an indefinite period of time. Um, so we need this additional backup. And I can see as the town continues to grow and as email accounts get added, as more users are on the system, it's more space. So we're going to need the additional space. So, uh, the additional cost, uh, for what we're estimating this to be at is, um, uh, approximately $5,000 more than last year. So, um, still saving then what we were paying from Northeast IT, um, but there's an additional cost to it. So the recommended budget proposal is $37,500.
So I thought emails were only five years.
Seven years.
Seven years for emails?
Seven years.
Oh, okay, so we can, I was going to say we're going to need our own data center soon.
You know, it's, it's tough. And then, you know, if people are not using the OneDrive and they're saving it to the server, that takes up a lot of space too.
Yeah.
Um, and so we're, you know, we're going to have to educate, you know, more education on, you know, the OneDrive and, and having people use the OneDrive. Um, because that's, you know, that could be a problem. There's a lot of data out there. Um, so, um, I just wanted to report that to the board. Um, the additional quote is, is pr- is provided to you, uh, from, uh, Entree. It's right in the, right in the sys- right in the, uh, in your, in your backup. Um, we, uh, are looking at, um, a public safety complex informational first meeting. I know the board had indicated that they would like to see a meeting in April, the first one. Um, and we're throwing the date out of April 17th, which is a Thursday. Uh, that is available for, uh, available at the school. The auditorium is available as well as Jeff, uh, McWay from Tekton is, is available.
I'd say let's do it.
April 17th at what?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. At the school.
Quaybach, yeah, at the auditorium. I would like to know, Jeff has committed to three, um, meeting dates. You know, you, you, the board had indicated that they want, see one in, in April, in June, and then one in September.
Yep.
Um, you know, I would, I would recommend that the board consider not having it at the annual or special at that particular time because there is no article that is associated with it on the warrant. And it could, number one, it could confuse people and number two, I'm not sure if the moderator can allow for a discussion about that if it's not on the articles, it's not on the warrant.
Yeah, I didn't think we were going to discuss it anyway though, right? I thought we were going to have the three informational-
Do a, do a, you know, like a, a, a meeting when we got everybody at the town meeting and just, this is, what's being proposed is an informational thing and that was it.
So, I mean, y- I mean, you could do it before the, the, the meeting if you wanted to do it before, um, for people or you could do it another day in June, um, you know, I just, I don't, I, I think it would be hard pressed to get it done during-
I just think it's going to be hard for a bunch of people to go there two separate days in that month. Because it's hard enough getting them to show up for one meeting and they don't mind two, but-
But then the problem is-
You have a do- you have a good point, but-
But then we have a special at 6:30 and a regular at seven, so what time would this meeting be like at?
Six.
Five, six, half an hour?
If it's just a presentation.
Well, then you'd have to have, if people have questions or anything else.
Or 30, you know.
Two hours minimum.
Four o'clock.
Yeah, which then I don't know.
A lot of people wouldn't be able to make that.
They wouldn't be able to make it anyway.
Plus, yeah, because they gotta work, getting out of work, it probably wouldn't work out well that day.
So another day in June?
Yeah.
Maybe like the end of June or something. When is the annual?
The 12th.
Yeah, maybe towards the end of June. Maybe the 26th.
The 19th or the 26th?
Are we going to try a weekend meeting at some point too?
I, I think we should do one on a weekend.
I mean, maybe that could be the June one.
Because a lot of people have asked, why don't you ever do this on a weekend? I work during the week.
Yeah.
So if we do one on a weekend, but again, in June, the warmer weather's going to be here. And people are not going to want to sit in a meeting on a sad day. And people are not gonna wanna sit in a meeting on a sad day.
Yeah, I know, but-
In June.
I know, but what do we, you know?
You could save that one till September if you wanted to, the weekend one in September.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, I'd save the sad day till September because school's gonna be started anyways. And if we do it on the weekend, that would probably be better.
So maybe like the twenty-seventh or the twentieth of September, towards the end.
So is the board good with the twentieth or the twenty-seventh of September? Either one?
Well, you're gonna find out if you could even do it then with that.
Well, I, if you give me a couple of dates, and the reason why I'm, I'm trying to pin the board down with dates now is because I'd like to get a flyer. And if I can get the flyer in time, there's a possibility that I could talk to the tax collector to see if she could have it, you know, stuffed with the bills that go out May first, April first.
Okay. So you're looking at twentieth to twenty-seventh or the thirteenth to twenty-seventh for the sad day one?
You tell me the dates.
In September.
You tell me the dates that are good for you guys and I can just, whatever, if you give me like two dates or three dates that are good for you, then I can, and if you give me the authority to just pick which one-
I'm good September sixth, eighteenth, well, September sixth, thirteenth, twentieth and twenty-seventh.
All Saturdays. I think, I think I'm fine, too. Yeah.
Find out what's best for them.
Okay. All right. I'll, I'll check with Jeff and whatever date we can land on in September, we'll do. And what time are you thinking on a Saturday? Ten o'clock, one, eleven?
People wanna sleep in on their sad days, you know.
After lunch, maybe, like one o'clock, two o'clock?
Now, football starts in that season. You got football and everything going on those sad days. So town's all gonna be filling up those parking lots.
Oh, yeah, you do have, well, we-
Because we fill up, literally when football and cheer is going on, those parking lots are full.
Right. So if we have it at the school, then we have a scheduling conflict.
Right, because it's games. Unless it's an away game. But then if the school's having something going on, so it's gonna be kinda hard. I really check with them and I check with football and cheer to see if, if they know if there's any home games during that time.
Well, if you do it earlier in September, then school has just started.
Football starts when? The end of August, right?
Yeah, August, yeah. The fall sports, the schools start end of August.
Yes.
Fall, four, usually.
So in those parking lots, they're packed.
Are they night games, afternoon games?
They have them all day long because they go from Pee-wee all the way up to, like till nighttime, those, those games are still playing.
Big games at night are on Fridays. Is that right, Jim?
Dan has something to-
Dan?
Why don't we just move to the elementary school for that one meeting?
Yeah, sure.
There an auditorium in there?
There is an auditorium there at the elementary school, but there's not a lot of seating. The seating's all put out manually. There are, there are some bleachers that pull out.
The gym has an auditor, you know, a, a-
You mean the gym here?
No.
Oh.
Over there. Well, it's about the size of-
That's an idea.
Gym here.
Downstairs.
The gym downstairs. We have plenty of chairs. We can set it up. And I don't think a lot of people are gonna be showing up to that meeting anyways. Especially if we had two previously and were holding on a sad day, then it wouldn't conflict with a football game or anything else.
Okay, so Shepherd Building?
Definitely we should try to get food.
Okay, so September something.
So six thirteen, twentieth to twenty-
You're catering?
No, no, just pizzas or anything simple.
We'll, we'll have Karen make all our cupcakes from last time and then we'll have the vote immediately after.
The limoncello cupcakes with an extra tablespoon of limoncello.
You know, the refreshments at the end. Just something like that. It really drives people to come and stay.
What time? Oh, like what do, what do, what are we saying for time, like one, two o'clock?
Yeah, I, I would, I would probably say around, well, yeah, probably about two o'clock, baby. So it gives everybody time to do whatever they're gonna do.
Okay.
Wake up and then attend a meeting for an hour or whatever. Go about the day. Because I know football starts in the morning and it goes later. The older kids are playing later in the day. So usually around two o'clock, older kids are playing. With the younger kids, you kinda want the parents there.
Yeah, one parent could break away with the older kids, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, we could set this date now. I mean, if we're gonna have it at the Shepherd Building, what, what date do you wanna have it? I mean, as long as Jeff's available, I can-
I'm superstitious a little bit, so not the thirteenth.
Yeah, I'll go with that. The twentieth or the twenty-seventh, how about that?
Okay.
Derek?
Being positive, I, it's okay with me.
Okay.
Which day? Twentieth to twenty-seventh.
Either the-
Either one?
Either one. I'll see what day, what day Jeff is available.
I don't even know if I'm gonna be here. That's why I'm saying even being positive, I'll be okay.
Given, given Jeff two dates and then, so then it brings us back to the June.
Is it okay with you, Joe?
The twenty-sixth.
June twenty-sixth, okay.
Like, that's the last Thursday in June?
Yep, June twenty-sixth, okay. Six o'clock?
Yeah.
And we'll have that one at, at the Quaybuck Auditorium.
Yeah.
Okay. And so that's-
June twenty-sixth.
Let me, so I, I just wanted to get these dates so that I can get a flyer made. Jeff's gonna make the flyer and I can give him these dates to what he's available. So I've got September twentieth or twenty-seventh at two o'clock. It'll be here at the Shepherd Building. And I've got June twenty-sixth at six o'clock. And I've already got locked in April seventeenth at six o'clock at the, at Quaybuck.
Yes. You went, you went out of order there.
I'm sorry.
You went June, September, then April again. I'm like, what?
So do those dates work for everybody? All right, then that concludes my report for this week.
Thank you, Jim. Couple of comments. How much bytes do we have for space right now?
I'm sorry?
Going back to the-
Megabytes. Oh, oh, we're bumping up right against a one, one, one terabyte.
Could they give us like a, like a screen by the biggest file and going low?
Yes, I'm sure they could do that.
So we could do a little bit of, you'd see where-
See who's using the most data.
In, in one terabyte, I can literally without attachments, we can put two billion emails.
Yeah.
Okay, and-
I think a lot of it is people are not using the OneDrive.
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out. I'm trying to see a, a solution of good, good, of good practice.
Now, have, have we had a training session for the employees to, how to use it?
No.
Because I'll be honest, I use it all the time, but I still don't know how to use it. With the government, it automatically creates that for you.
Yeah.
So anytime I create a file, it creates it to the OneDrive automatically. I don't think that's, is that how it happens here?
Well-
But I have to log into the OneDrive.
Desktop.
Well, I always save everything to my desktop, but it automatically puts it on my OneDrive, too.
So everything in, what happens is there's a users folder in Windows that's then the username of the person who logged in. So like it's D. DeFrane. And under that is your desktop folder. So if you put it on the desktop, it goes to OneDrive because everything under D. DeFrane goes to OneDrive.
Right.
So we need something like that. So you can't mess it up, basically. Documents, desktop, downloads, pictures, all of it.
It, it goes automatically to the OneDrive, but unless somebody chooses to save it to the-
Well, even if I save it to my desktop, because I was always saving everything to my desktop, the previous IT people did mine. So everything that I saved to my desktop goes to the OneDrive. Even though it still looks like it's on my desktop.
That's maybe something we could do automatically to all the new computers, is link it to the OneDrive. So when you do create a file, it links to the OneDrive and it saves it there.
Oh, it's doing that now.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's just-
But they're still keeping it on their desktop.
Some people are keeping it on their desktop. So if it's saved to the OneDrive, you don't have to save it to your desktop. So if you not save it to your desktop, then it's, it would create up space for us.
So I'm, I'm not understanding that because if you save it just to your desktop, it's saving it to that computer station, to that computer, on that computer's memory.
Well, i- it's also saving it to the server, which would be the OneDrive.
So can we ask them to, to map it, at least their first thousand from the biggest? Because I'm gonna give you an example. The other day, in another board, we received an email with a video, okay?
Videos will take up a lot of space.
So that video went to you, went to me, went to, to you. Let's say we do nothing. That video, it's three times now, saved somewhere.
Yeah.
So if, if we find out how everything flows-
Yep.
You know, because if it's that saving to the, you know, to the network or where is it going? What's happening? Even if we don't do anything.
So is, are we saving it on our own server and the OneDrive?
Some people are.
So it's redundant.
Yeah, it's got, there's something.
We gotta find out, we gotta find out to make a good practice out of it.
Is it the OneDrive supposed to be your backup for your server?
It is.
Okay.
Should be the primary.
Your server and then the server is backing up to OneDrive.
Right. But if, if we're overloading our server-
No, I think in some cases, OneDrive acts as your server, your file server.
But I don't think that's how we set it up here.
Yeah, maybe.
Because we wanted it to be redundant. We wanted to keep our server because we were being asked, do you wanna get rid of the server and just use the OneDrive? And we're like, no, we wanna keep our server, but back it up.
But you're running out of space out of the server.
Well, that, that's, are we running out of space in the server or the OneDrive?
You're, no, you're running out of space out of the server.
Then we add, need to add another drive to the server then.
Well, they will. It costs you seventy-five dollars more a month.
Not to pay for it because on the server is a local server, correct? And it has its own memory on it. So all we need to do is expand the server's memory.
Can, can we ask him to map it?
Yes.
And see how it's going? Because right now, if we receive an email with a big attachment, we don't even open it up. It's saved three times.
Right.
Somewhere, where is it saving? The drive is no more than a folder outside. So is that, that email, it's never gonna look the drive. It's somewhere else. So let's map it. So-
I mean, I, I'm under the impression that it, that it, and, and, and Entree's under the impression that it's staff saving it multiple times. But if you have it set up where it's saved on the server and saved on the OneDrive, it's kind of defeating the purpose because the, the OneDrive is, is the cloud and, and it's there and it will save it. And that's what we're paying for.
The main concept for the drive is to have a folder you could share stuff with someone else. So whatever I save there, for example, the pictures we take at site visits, I put it on that, on that folder and then you can go guys and look at it instead of me sending all the pictures to you and duplicating.
My, my thoughts when we set this up is we had our server. If our server got hacked, it wouldn't make a difference because if we lost all that material, if it got degraded and they say, well, you shut out of your server, well, okay, we got everything on the OneDrive then and we can recover it.
Well, let's find out. Let's map it. Because sometimes servers don't store anything.
Right.
They just think.
Yeah, pass through.
Yeah, they just think. They're just a network.
So I can get a detailed for you on that?
Let's get a detail. We map it. Do we understand it? And then we promote a good practice on how to deal with stuff.
Sure.
Lots of training.
Find out where this one terabyte is.
Yeah, yeah.
What are you talking about? What are you talking about one terabyte?
Well, right now, they say little devices about their size with eight terabytes.
Yeah. My phone holds more than-
Like I said, I can store in one terabyte, you know, billions of emails without attachments. So, but it's very relative. That's why I want the map of how everybody's saving stuff and the report from the biggest file to the, you know, you, they have, they can only do a hundred. So we can see who belongs to, and what is it, and, you know, just an analysis.
Sure.
Please. Thank you. Thank you for the report.
Yeah, no problem.
Gave you some more work out of that one. Any new business? I don't have anything.
Any old business?
We got a list, right?
We got the list, yeah.
Am I supposed to go through each one of them even though if they're crossed out?
No, I think just skim them and see.
See if there's anything you wanna talk about. I don't think you have to go through every one of them.
So I, I did the welcome to Warren sign. I was supposed to bring it tonight and I didn't. So my fault. I'll send an email today to all of you with my, what I did. And it's just basically grabbing what we have.
Send it to Karen.
Yes.
She'll send it to us.
Yeah, so we only have anyone?
Yes, because-
It, it will be the same because then she's gonna-
It should just go through her.
Okay. Then, and then we can talk about it with the signs. Red dot on all computers?
You could probably get rid of that one, right? I mean, that's just standard practice now.
Which one?
No, that was because we're getting new computers, just to be remembered to put the red dot on all of them. Because some of them don't have red dot now. So it won't be on-
So that's working progress and I'll take care of that.
Okay.
And Mrs. Dusty did not do the next one. Sorry.
So skip it?
Yep.
Business licensing?
We're working on that one.
Working on it.
We're working on a new website.
Credit card departments?
How did it go with the credit card?
I have to check with Dawn. It was really a busy week with the auditors in here.
I bet, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't approach that subject yet with her.
How did it go with the school agreement provision?
I think that's just a note, just to-
Just to keep it?
Yeah, just to keep it.
We're going to ask Westbrookfield if they were interested in doing it. But nobody was assigned to do that or anything.
I thought you were gonna reach out to the town administrator.
Yes, I can do that.
Okay.
About the regional agreement?
How is the, the process with the certificate for the oldest resident going?
We just have to pick a date and see who was going to invite them and do a meet and invite her and pick a date, pick a date.
Yeah, just invite her and pick a date.
Pick a date.
Whenever she's available. It's every Thursday at six o'clock.
All right. I will do that.
We have to set up a meeting about a, oh, we did-
We just did that.
Okay, so that one you can scratch.
Yep.
Anything else to add it to this list?
We scratched off the land for Mark's Mark Mountain in Tax Title. Did we ever find out if it was in Tax Title?
I believe it is.
Or the land up there, the town was get, because I think it was more, does the town own it?
I don't know that, no.
Yeah, that's, we, nobody's ever found out and nobody knows how to find it out. It's kinda like-
How can we not find out if we own land?
It's kinda like that, that cemetery, the South Warren Cemetery. Nobody knows who actually owns it, but it doesn't show up on anything. So-
This, there's gotta be some way we gotta figure out who, if we, because that's what the logger was saying, right?
That's what he claims, yeah.
Is we own the land. And they did a, they did a, a search and apparently we own the land, but-
I'll reach out to Karen.
Do we have anything saying we actually own that land?
The last time I talked to Carrie, we did not have anything that showed that we were, it was in tax file, but it never showed that it went through land court or anything. But I'll double check with her again.
Is there an owner listed?
Yeah, but it's not us.
Yeah.
Wow, that's interesting.
It's giving you a hard time, huh?
It is.
You need a mouse.
I believe it is-
That one.
This piece.
Yeah.
Albert Lincoln Washburn.
And then what about the long one on the bottom side?
This one is definitely ours.
We own that one.
Town of Warren. How many acres is the one on top?
Hmm, I think it was forty-something. It's hard to find acreage in here.
Should have it on the card.
Yeah, no, it's just, it's just hard to read.
It's okay, if we can find out a little bit more.
Yeah, we definitely need to research that, because if we own that or we have that. That would be amazing to do like a hiking trail going up there, and maybe like a little observatory or something. For residents to be able to go up there and look over the mountain.
Thirty-nine acres.
Still a lot of land up there. Sure, if Parks took that on, that would be amazing.
This other piece is is four.
Yeah, but that's only like an access up.
Yeah.
To there.
Okay, I'll check with Carrie again.
Okay.
Yeah, because that that logger was convinced we owned it.
That's what he claimed, too.
Correspondence?
We have a letter from John.
Also, this email from CMR PC. Who wants to nominate an award?
Mm-hmm. Now, we're not talking about that, though.
Still, they're gonna do it. John Feeny.
Yep.
So this this um, this letter uh, simply has to be uh, addressed when the treasurer has a. Either a tax title uh, auction or uh, a property that is listed for sale.
Which one is Lot ninety? Do we get that on Southbridge Road? We own that?
Um, I believe we 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 do, um, because it looks like.
Ninety-one.
Somebody placed a bid uh, on it.
So he's at ninety and he's looking to buy ninety-one.
Looks like.
From my house, go down to the center of town. One fifty-three, one, go, keep going down. Do we find, what is it, ninety?
Ninety-one.
Oh, right here. Is that right?
No, it's ninety-five.
Nope, oh. What's this ninety-one here?
Where's?
That's ninety-four.
Oh, ninety.
There's a ninety-one over there. Ninety is right next to it, on the right. Right on Elm Street. Oh, that's the house, no, no, I'm wrong.
Well, that's Lot ninety and ninety-one is right next to him to the left.
Yeah.
That's the one he wants to buy. Who's says that owns it, us?
No, Dora Day.
That's on Southbridge Road?
No.
No, it's on Southbridge Road is the one that he's talking about.
Elm Street, right?
So that's not the one?
No.
So where's ninety on Southbridge? Keeps going up.
Yeah, it does.
Cause I'm two thirty-seven.
Guy lives on fifteen oh nine Southbridge Road.
Get someone way up by Hawks or Forests.
Oh, wow, it took a while to do that.
Yeah, this ninety.
Uh, so what is this, Bragg?
Hawks, have any?
Oh, and Bragg, right, that's Bragg, okay.
So click on ninety?
Town of Warren.
Okay, so we own that.
Yeah.
We own both?
No, we own.
Just ninety-one?
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one. Tax title at some point?
So, no, it 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 went to an auction, a- a- and and so it there was bidders at the auction. And this gentleman bid on it, threw another bidder, um, and didn't get it, and then, um, somebody else got it. But the sale didn't go through for some reason.
Yeah, so then it has to go to auction again.
So now it's been sitting dormant uh, uh, on our list, and it has to go to another auction at some point.
Yeah.
This is his second request.
But why is he coming to us when it has to go to auction?
I think he's trying to push us.
We had nothing to do with that.
Well, it's tax title.
It's a treasurer.
Treasurer.
Yeah.
He wants to buy it.
Yeah. Then he can bid on it again, when it goes up the bid.
So Dawn is in charge of that sort of thing, okay. So I would say forward the letter to Dawn, and then if she wants to. Do an auction or include it, like, does she have auctions regularly, or?
Well, the issue was that tax title law had changed significantly since a recent ruling. And so it gave treasurers and tax title custodians pause to normally go about doing auctions. And so, because of the fact that there was a Supreme Court ruling that said, instead of, you you know, now, when when an auction is held. Um, you know, you, first of all, you can't hold auctions anymore, you you have to have it listed with a realtor. And then, but if this if this property was foreclosed on prior to uh, November of twenty-four. Which I'm I'm guessing this has happened prior to November of twenty-four, then you could have an auction on this particular property. But now, moving forward, since the law has changed, you can't have auctions, they gotta be listed with a real estate broker. And so, the auctions or or and a real estate broker. Whatever equity that comes about would have to be refunded to the previous owner. So as before, towns used to be able to keep the entire, whatever it 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 came out. You know, whatever it brought for for value at the auction, except the house went for a hundred thousand, the town would keep the hundred thousand. But if if there's, if there is, um, say you foreclosed on it at fifty thousand dollars and the. And the town sold it for a hundred, well, the other fifty has gotta go back to the other owner. Minus any other expenses and costs associated with it.
So the real estate agent would get paid the ex- through the expenses before that got reimbursed to the owner.
Yeah.
Of the previous owner.
So all the expenses would have to be taken out of the uh, the proceeds of the sale. And then whatever equity is there would have to be refunded to the previous owner, and then you gotta try to find the previous owner.
Put it on the list.
Which is, you know, a challenge.
If they passed away, too.
Then you gotta re- then you gotta research, yeah, you gotta put it in escrow, you gotta then research their heirs. And there could be years upon years before that money ever gets returned to.
Would that go to Massachusetts?
No, it would stay in here, and we would have to.
Have to keep on revolving it?
Yeah. I mean, it's it's a nightmare for the for the.
Cause I know in Massachusetts, you can go to unclaimed monies and stuff like that.
Different, yeah, yeah.
All right, I'll pass the letter on to Dawn.
Thank you. Any other, um, correspondence?
No.
Any comments or concerns?
No.
No.
I'm gonna open the.
Just think Rich looked great again today, with his shirt, match as well.
So we're gonna open to the public for any comments or concerns? Yes, Joe.
Uh, gentlemen. Last week, you mentioned about taking down the old checks. And possibly, uh. Putting up photos of the original. People who founded Warren. Well. There are no original photos of the people of Warren, because for a simple reason, they were farmers. Their main goal, other than owning a piece of land, was to basically support their own families. Now. What I've handed you is what the original town was taken from. Uh, basically from Coy Hill Road East was taken from what is. At that time, Brookfield's Second Parish. And along the Brookfield, I listed the people who were in that parish that came into Warren. From Coy Hill, west to the Palmer Line, north of the river. Was Kingsfield at that time, it's now Palmer. What is south of the river came from Brimfield. Now, you think of Brimfield as this little town just south of us, but actually, at one time, it was bigger. It incorporated a part of South, uh, Stirbridge, Holland, Wales, and Munson. It's quite a large chunk of land. Uh, when it comes to who had a grant in this area. Colonel Pinchin, who was the founder of Springfield, was given a grant, probably by the King of England at that time. For six hundred acres. At the top of what's now Coy Hill, which is Colonel's Mountain. Just behind the original town farmhouse. Uh, Coy Hill, by strange coincidence, was named after Richard Coy, who was on the original surveying team for the Town of Warren. Uh, another six hundred acre grant was in the Brimfield section. Between what is now Reed Street and Brook Road, was to Peter Tufts. Of what was called then Boston Town. I can't imagine Boston being a town. Uh, over the course of years. Farmers came in and they were allowed maybe fifty acre grants, hundred acre grants. And a lot of. The current streets. Are named after the farm that was on that street. So you get, listen, say like, uh, Bemis, Bragg, Cronin, Crouch, Cutler. Dean, Gilbert, Hawks, Manning, O'Neil, Douglas, Patrick, Ramsdale, Reed, and Richardson. And those are just the farms, some of which you could probably see today, because they might still have a barn up. Or an oddly shaped box house. We also have streets that are named some past important people. Columbus, Knox Trail, after General Henry Knox. Miltonville Fountain Way, who was a past selectman. Pulaski was named after Count Casimir Pulaski. And Cray Bog Street is after the local Indian tribe. Then we have the references to the American Revolution. Bay Path Road, Boston Post Road, Constitution Ave, Independence Lane, Liberty Street. Patrick Road after Patrick Henry. Presidential Circle, Winthrop Terrace after Governor Winthrop. Yankee Drummer Drive, and Washington Street, which is after our first president. I mean, just think. I would suggest that instead of just putting any old picture up there. Bring in the Historical Commission and ask their suggestions of what could be put up there. I mean, they're gonna say, well, put Washington's picture, he was the first president. But there are so many other things, I mean, um. You might find a- a- an original drum. From the American Revolution, what did it look like? I'm sure it's not one of our snare drums that you can find on a band setup. The people who founded this town, as I said, were farmers. They came here. Basically, to have a little piece of land and support their families. Now, another thing is, the names of the towns we came from. Brimfield, Brookfield, and Kingsfield, they're all fields. And if, it doesn't take much to look around to see the great fields all through this town. Well, people used to raise wheat and rye to make bread. And you have to think about it, even our original colonists, that's what they were interested in, wheat and rye. It was the commodity of exchange. But it's something to think about that. We are a conglomerate. Of. Real patriot citizens. This is where it's at. We perpetuate this every single generation. As trying, give us a little piece of land, let us raise our families. It's not much to think about, but then again, the Historical Commission might want to express themselves on our blank wall. Thank you.
Incredible, thank you for the information, that's, that's so unique and powerful. Somebody asked me online, you know, about the, uh, when was the last time the taxes were paid on Mark's Mountain? Just for the.
I'll find out, I believe it was like sixty-five years ago or something like that.
Sixty-five years ago?
I think, I think that's what I remember.
How, if we don't own it, why don't we own it by now?
That's what I remembered, cause you 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 brought it up, David. And when we looked at the tax title, you said this was back, I thought you said sixty-seven, so.
So it's on that list, on our tax title list, okay. Yeah, we can look it up on that.
I can see trails now.
Well. We just have to make sure that the town did the proper paperwork to acquire it. Um, if that's true, and if they haven't paid sixty-five, well, paid taxes in sixty-five years. The odds are, we're probably not gonna get those taxes from the original owner. But.
But I'll find out for you.
Thank you. And with Mr. Conrad's suggestion, I would recommend that we do have, um, historical. Look into what they, we could put up on the wall, because it'd be nice if we did have some pictures of town, whether it is. Historical places in the town, or just fi- old farms or something, you know, it'd be nice to have.
I'll add it to the list.
Any more comments or concern from the public? Zoomlen?
No.
Next meeting is March twenty, twenty twenty-five at six P M in this same room.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David, you for an eye.
Which I have her eye.
Derek Bell is eye, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.